Alrighty, good afternoon. Thank you all for joining. I call to order the City of Ocean Shore's Planning Commission meeting. It is Tuesday, March fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-three at two P M. And most of you are in the Ocean Shore's library. Due to family funeral, I've had to relocate to Plymouth, Mass. on the east coast for a little bit. But I'll be able to run this meeting, uh, run this meeting remotely. I don't know where Brian is. I had no notice that he wouldn't be here. And I'm a little bit surprised that he's not here right now, but he may come in late. So we will do the roll call. Commissioner Bricker. Commissioner Ward. Commissioner Barr. Commissioner Schultz. Commissioner Bachman. Commissioner Lawless. Alright, and a quick note, and Marshall reminded me, and it's kind of good for me to be on the other side of this to hear this all is, you must please be facing and looking at what Marshall calls the owl when you're speaking. Because it makes a huge difference on how it's picked up. Marshall and I tried to have a conversation, and when he wasn't looking at the owl, it was night and day. But once he did, it's very easy to hear. Before we go to the meeting agenda, Dan, do we want to talk about minutes? Do you want to do that at the approval of minutes, Dan?
Well, we can talk about it either way. I was gonna amend the agenda to remove the, the approval of minutes and add review minute criterion format.
I've got it. So, um, so we have a motion to approve the meeting agenda with the addition of a discussion of minutes format and, uh, format and, and criteria. Do I have a motion to amend the agenda as, as recommended?
I assume.
A second? Okay, we have a, move with a second. All in favor? Aye. So we have an approved agenda where we're going to talk about format of the minutes. And in that case, we won't talk about approval of the minutes because, uh, as, as Dan has mentioned, we need to get together and have a unified format. So the minutes look the same and are complete and done the same way ever, every time. At that time, Dan, I'll also talk about process where they're supposed to come to me first. We'll do all of that. So at this point, we, we will get on to public comments. And are there any public comments in the room? And Dan, I'm gonna ask you to look around because I can't see everybody.
There's no public comment from the room, and then you have one online.
Okay, Vida, public comments.
Hi, Gary. Thank you. Um, I do have one comment, and that is I saw the A H B L Public Participation Plan for the Shoreline Master Plan Update, and it looks like we're falling behind schedule. So I'm eager to see that update as soon as it's available. Thank you.
Thank you, Vida. Alright, with no other comments, Dan, would you, could you please a little, a discussion about, I want to get this done first of all, the meeting agenda format and process?
Okay. I'm gonna have to pick on Thor a little bit. Whoop me up. The, uh, the minutes that Thor did, I was a little surprised because he's followed our format before, but we have to record who makes a motion, who seconds, and, and whether it's unanimous or whatever, and none of that was done. And, and there was no, there was no mention of the motion to, uh, finalize the meeting at the end of, end of the day. I went back and looked and the minutes format has been used since two thousand and sixteen is the one I use. Thor used it, Gary used it. Paul came real close. Okay, you're, you're right on. The only thing you would have, I have a bracket around here, and I don't think they grab the bracket. So, so my point is, I think we need to go back to using a standard format, whether it's Paul or the one I've been using. And we need to follow it.
And then you sent me yours, and I'm using it today. Yeah.
Right, and I had put together a template, because, which I think was the one that you used, because I didn't know what to do when I took them.
Yeah, you, you did very well, except you didn't, the only thing, we need to have who took the minutes. That's the only thing you missed.
Correct.
But other than that, it was, it was great. So that, that's my spiel. We need to do, so if somebody wants to take on, either we, you said we're gonna use the format I've been using, I can send it out to everybody, or we want to use Paul's, which is very similar, doesn't matter to me.
Dan, I have, Dan, I have one question on your format. That isn't the Richard Will's with the dropdowns, is it?
I took out some of the, I took out the dropdowns. I don't know how to do those because it.
I did it because depending on your version of Word, on one computer, it works on mine, on the other, it doesn't. So that's why I didn't use it. I spent more time getting rid of it. So if you have a format that doesn't have the dropdowns, I'm good with that, but we can't use, the dropdowns don't work on everybody's Word.
I make a motion that we use Dan's, uh, format for our minutes.
Do we, do we have a second? We have a second. All in favor? I'm in favor. And Thor, did you vote yes?
Yes, I did.
Okay, I didn't see. So I assume we're, uh, unanimous in that change. So I think we're done with that business. Is that right, Dan?
Yes, other than Thor will have to redo his minutes.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll get that done. The other thing I must say is that, I don't know if it says it in the handbook, but we've always said it verbally. The minutes have to come to me first so I can review them. I didn't see these first. I know some people have been sending them straight because it's not clear what the right way is. But if you send them to me, I really need them typically by the Monday before the meeting at the latest, not the Monday right before the meeting, eight days before the meeting. That way I can review them and get them to Sarah by Tuesday, by seven days before the meeting. So when you do the minutes, please get them done. Email me to them to me, no later than eight days before the next meeting. And then I can review them and pass them on to Sarah. Several people have been sending them straight to Sarah, and I just don't want to give her that workload. If you give it to me, I'll clean them up and send it to her so they look good. Did I miss anything else, Dan?
No, that's good.
That's good. So that's the other thing. Alright, moving on to lot clearing. On lot clearing, I will draw your attention to, unfortunately, mine didn't print, but it's page four of your packet, I believe, page four. This is basically what I would propose sending to the mayor as the planning commission's review of lot clearing. There's not a lot, because after all of the discussions we had, it came down to what I felt was important was to pull out the significant paragraph three A and B that talks about significant trees and ten percent by number and replanting at three to one. And I put that statement in there, and I will read that for the group that says, "In discussion with the lead city planner, the planning commission observes that due to the narrow width of most lots, combined with the shallow root structure of native trees and ocean shores, it is often not possible to retain ten percent of the significant trees on the lot to be developed. In this case, the replacement of removed significant trees, more than ten percent of the retention requirement at a three to one ratio is identified, and the clearing grading permit is the most prudent action." I felt it was good for us to put a statement to that effect to sort of say, listen, we, we like what the planning commission did, working with the city planner on the attempt to retain ten percent and go beyond. Do we have any discussion about including this in the transmission to the mayor? Because this really isn't policy. This is more just a statement of reiterating the fact that we believe that, as written, the code is effective. Any discussion about that? Okay, seeing no discussion. And I will read aloud, and I'll talk a little bit about the most important part. I said, "The planning commission recommends that for construction on a lot that required a landscaping plan to receive a clearing and grading permit in accordance with O S M C seventeen fifty one hundred dot A, the city building department should not grant a final building occupancy permit inspection approval until the planning department verifies that the landscaping required, including significant replays at the time of the clearing grading permit issuance, has been accomplished." That's what we talked about. The second paragraph, our second sentence, I really want to talk about. So in discussion with some other folks, this came around. Alternatively, or in the case of unavoidable days and delays in completing required landscaping, the owner most, must, may post a five thousand dollar landscaping completion bond with the city to obtain a final occupancy permit inspection approval. Two things in here. We don't actually issue an occupancy permit, to my knowledge, in Ocean Shores. What we do is we approve the final building permit. So I want to put both of those languages in there in case we do something that looks like an occupancy permit. I went round and round the city code, and all I could find was the final inspection. Marshall, do you have any insight on that issue?
Um, I, I know that they do, um, requests come in for a certificate of occupancy.
Okay.
It, it's my understanding that, that they do, after final inspection, do issue what's called a certificate of occupancy as opposed to an occupancy permit.
Okay, but it's after the final inspection?
Correct.
Okay. Alright, so a discussion about, um, allowing people, if there's weather delays or other reasons, they need to get in their house, allowing a completion bond with the city in lieu of saying you can't, um, get your occupancy permit until your landscaping is done. Any discussion on that, that alternative? Because that was added after we taught, we talked about it, but we didn't really come to a decision.
The only thing that I have is, is it, is it a may or a must in your wording there? May post or must post?
Uh, that's a good question. I guess must.
Or in case of unavoidable delays completing required landscaping, the owner may post, alternatively may post.
Oh, got you. Okay.
Oh, yeah, I think alternatively may works in legal terms. Because, because the may is going back to the, this is an alternative if for some reason you can't get the landscaping done and you need to get in the house. So alternatively may could be, should be okay. And the lawyer is gonna change this all anyways when it gets put into code. Well, all we're trying to basically say is that, and I, and I didn't want to say a preference, but I think as a group, we think tying, if your lot required, it was cleared and graded and required a landscaping permit for the city building department does the final inspection or issues the occupancy permit, you also need to, um, get your post, you know, get your clearing and grading permit cleared, basically. That's really what we're trying to say. And on top of that, we think there may be cases where there's weather delays or other delays that make that not feasible. So then in that case, we would ask you to post a bond. Discussion about that. I'll, I'll ask one more question on this. And Brian, would you see any issues with getting a bond for something like that? I don't think so, do you?
You know, I don't, although it depends on, I'd actually, actually have to see the bond requirements, which would, that would probably be generated by the city's attorneys. So
Yes.
I don't know what that, I mean, I don't know that, what that would look like without seeing the paperwork behind it. But I can't imagine that it would be difficult. The only problem about bonding is that it's basically, uh, the bonding companies are always looking for a bunch of personal information that homeowners probably are not gonna be real excited about giving up.
Yeah. Yeah.
It, it's really, uh, it might be a prohibitive operation. Basically, they're gonna find another way to go about doing it.
Yeah, and it may be that somebody says, oh, I'm gonna post a bond in lieu of doing it. They just do it. You know? Okay. And this only came up, this only came up because we had, had a lot of discussion about what if a person can't get it done, do we want to sort of delay them getting into their house? So I see this as an alternative, but maybe just best described it as not the preferred alternative. And, and really, it, it, I'm, I'm just trying to think of where, when you would do it. It would only be if somebody, for some reason, had a seasonal, and nobody thinks there's a seasonal. If it was me personally, I would just plant the trees. Because really, the only measurable compliance with the clearing and grading permit is really the replantation of the trees, correct, Marshall? There's not a whole lot else that's quantitative and could really prevent you from getting your, um, final approval of post clearing and grading landscaping, Marshall, correct? It's really just replanting of trees.
Currently, that's, that's correct.
Right, and we've done nothing to change that. Um, so my plan would be to vote on that paragraph, those two sentences. Um, and, you know, with the planning commission's concurrence, I would send this to the mayor next week as our work done on clearing and grading. Um, any more discussion on that particular paragraph? Oh, good. Alright, so let's, I don't have to do a motion. I can do this as straight as, I don't think I have to take a motion. I can just do this as a straight vote. All in favor of sending these two sentences as our discussion about, uh, changes to the current, uh, clearing and grading code, please, all in favor?
Aye.
Alrighty, so we have a unanimous on the changes to clearing.
Gary, can I abstain on this, um, just because the bonding required?
Please, yeah, please. Let's note that as one abstinence. Good, good catch. Thank you, Brian. We were good until then. Alrighty. Next on the agenda, Shoreline Master Plan. Marshall and I sat down for a couple of hours and kind of went through some of the stuff I had found. Marshall, can you give us a quick update on the schedule and then go ahead and get the, the, the actual dates updated on the plan? Because we're gonna talk about that a little bit today to sort of finalize the, the schedule for you.
Yeah, we're working, we're working on, um, getting the, uh, the public meeting put together. Uh, your, your comments from, uh, from this meeting will be, um, rolled into that, you know, the recommendation, um, for some of this language. We'll go to the city council and also be available for public comment in that same time period. In talking to Nicole, um, there was some concern about, uh, schedule, but I think we're, we're pretty close to being back on track with the language coming out of this meeting, provided that, that this group will agree. And then forwarding that to the council for the, for the public hearing. Nicole is prepared to notice that. Um, we are gonna run concurrently, um, the notice for, um, SEPA. I've got SEPA in right now. Oh, no, I don't. I'm waiting to um, submit the SEPA checklist and the, um, D N S until Nicole is ready to transmit that same data to the Department of Ecology for their review period. And that's gonna, that will run for thirty days and, uh, and then that will allow for public comment during that same thirty day period. And as soon as we have the draft ready to put out on the street, we'll do that and notice it.
So what are we shooting at for a public hearing date? I'm trying to remember. Did you just change what we had talked about?
Um, I, I, I think it's gonna be the first or second meeting in, uh, April is what we're, what we're hoping for.
Based on the timeline, you told me, I think the, the second meeting would probably be the earliest you could do it, if you have to do a thirty day.
Right.
And that would be the twenty-fifth. So the timeline is public hearing, city council on the twenty-fifth, hopefully. Just to, just because the Shoreline Master Plan, correct, we required twenty days, but twenty-one days, but SEPA requires thirty, and you want to get them at the same time.
Oh, we're just, we're just trying to standardize on a thirty day comment period, uh, to give adequate time to, um, review and respond.
Alright, thank you. Um, yeah, so I only have, I think I came up with like five comments or something, and most of them, very few of them affect the body of the thing. Some of them are more back to the city to do something. The planning commission says things, and only a couple of them really apply to the document. So my plan would be is, you'll, I'll go through very clearly what I think the comments are, and I will ask for a vote on each comment from the planning commission as planning commission comments. Then we'll open it up to the rest of the commissioners to verbally provide comments that Marshall will record, and we'll go from there. Is that okay with you, Marshall?
Sure.
Okay.
Yes.
So I think that's the best solution. So my first comment, which I don't have pages, is page five, I believe, is I wanted to add a statement as you see there, and maybe it's wordy, maybe it's not, but I will read this statement aloud. I won't read everything else aloud. Um, it's basically, "The city shall work with all regulatory agencies to balance the need to ecologically protect shorelines in critical areas with the rights of property owners and the public to establish and maintain physical and visual access to the shoreline, as well as protect personal and public property from fire and other hazards resulting from encroachment of bordering wetlands and associated vegetation of budding on private and public lands." This is a non binding statement, but I'd like to get something on the table with the regulatory agencies saying all's we're asking to do is balance. We want to balance the, the, the absolute need to ecologically protect with a property owner rights, but there's nothing quantitative in here. It's sort of just a statement of city position from the planning commission. Um, do we have discussion on this statement before we sort of go to vote on it? Carrie?
I really do think it's a great statement, because if you actually go to the Department of Ecology's own website, their, their mission statement is in fact to balance the economic viability and beautification and maintenance of natural habitats. So that's their own statement that says that. And I believe that if we don't create a balance, we are in fact creating some economic hazard on people, especially on that front row. Their, their property values will go down. Period.
And I also know that this was a discussion at the city council, um, retreat that was brought up, and that was brought up strictly. And so this is sort of a first toe in the water towards the rest of the stuff we kind of want to start working with ecology on. Um, any other discussion about this first statement? Nope. So I'm just gonna ask for a show of hands in favor of transmitting this as a planning commission comment. All in favor? The rest of them will be a lot simpler. I'm not gonna read them all. Um, this is more to, I guess it's poking the city a little bit, but, um, this section of the master plan talks about the city's responsibility to maintain, enhance, and increase public access to the shore, to the shoreline. There's all these reasons. Um, so what I have said is, I'd like the planning commission maybe to put up this statement, and maybe this is too much to say, "To maintain pedestrian access of Pacific shoreline, the city should develop plans to upgrade and maintain all pedestrian access trails, especially those ones located at the west end of Butterclam Road that are often underwater and inaccessible during several months, and inaccessible during several months during the winter. Additionally, the city should consider developing pedestrian-only east-west access trails along the major vehicle access routes such as Pacific Avenue, Ocean Lake Way, and Taurus Boulevard for safety reasons." I know some of you walk that regularly. Mark, do you, do you think this is sort of something we should tell the city the planning commission's interested in?
I certainly do, and you're right. I walk that probably five times a week. Uh, the Ocean Lake Way, Taurus Boulevard route, my bride and I do that on a three mile walk. And yes, if there is a safety concern with, you get two-way traffic there, some blast by you, some won't move over. And there's really, unless you get right at the gutter, there's nowhere to go sometimes. So I, I read that, and I'm going, yes, please. At least request something like that.
Yeah, just say that we'd like to see that.
Yeah, it, it might not be the only places in town, but certainly I can vouch for Pacific, Ocean Lake Way, and Taurus, as that would be very nice. It would be needed for safety purposes.
Yeah, Carrie?
I think too, even if you're walking those dune trails north-south, it's really difficult to even cross those entrances, especially as winter comes along and they just pile stuff, all logs and everything, it piled up longer. It's just hazardous to try and do that. I walk those pretty regularly too, and I know the last time I was out there, which was about, it was right before I got sick, I literally could not walk down to get onto Taurus. It was just too dangerous. So it's not just the access points themselves, but it is in fact the north-south entrance points on that dune trail.
That is absolutely correct. Um, we often comment as we walk, it says emergency vehicles only for access, and we often comment, there is no way an emergency vehicle can get up there because of the debris that's been loaded there. Um, and I understand the reason why they do that, but it, it is, uh, it is quite clear it's tough.
Yep, alright. And I will tell you, a lot of people who can't walk and want to drive like to use Butterclam and Marine View, but Butterclam now is underwater five months a year. You can even walk it. You have to kind of bushwalk through the bushes. So there's really no alternatives. More people are starting going back to using cars, parking on cars, because they can't get on the other trails. So the, the idea was, this won't change the Shoreline Master Plan, but this is kind of using the actual words of the Shoreline Master Plan to note something we'd like the city to work on. Any further discussion? All in favor of including this as a comment? I am in favor. I think we've, we're unanimous. The next couple are easy. Um, and I'm not gonna pull it up, Marsh. It's just not worth it, because this really strange table in there that says what you can do where in the shoreline, and if for some reason it says, um, "Commercial activities such as concession stands and gift shops are permitted in the residential shoreline area." Well, that's not permitted in our code. So I said, let's just not make it a permitted activity in the shoreline plan either. Is that about right, Marshall?
That's correct.
Yep. So I don't think we need, uh, is there a need to talk about saying you can't have concession stands and gift shops in the residential area? I don't see one. All in favor of this? Just a show of hands. We got that. It's unanimous. The next tour, um, I spent a lot of time on the technical part of uh, shoreline stabilization, reviewing that, because I know we have some, had some issues and continue to have issues. Um, so section four, section six oh seven, comment four, talks about whenever you replace placement of greater than fifty percent or thirty-five feet, whichever is smaller, measured on a cumulative basis of the linear length of existing shoreline stabilization, stabilization is not considered repair, repair maintenance and must be designer viewed as a replacement. And it's a lot more onerous to replace than repair or maintain a shoreline stabilization structure. This works great on the inland, but I know of many, many, um, bayside and one ocean side shoreline stabilization structure that are hundreds of feet long. So telling somebody that if they're gonna replace thirty-five feet of a, look at the one in front of the community club. The community club, um, armoring is probably five hundred feet long. So limiting them to thirty-five feet of repair, I thought was a little bit silly. So what I'm asking is that we, we basically say, remove the or thirty-five feet. Just say, anything you repair over fifty percent is considered replacement. Marshall, do we have to discuss this from your end at all?
Um, I don't think so. I don't have anything, any situations out there where, where thirty-five feet, you know, you know, makes or breaks the project, fifty percent would in most cases, um, you know, take care of the problem. It makes it easier to understand. You go out and measure the existing structure. If you're replacing more than half of it, you go through the permitting process.
And I just thought, and you still have to get a permit to do maintenance and repair. It's just a much easier process. So the maintenance and repair isn't unpermitted. You have to get approval for shoreline structure, I believe, right, Marshall?
Yeah, you would, that's correct. You would have to have a geotechnical engineer certify that a, uh, a structural stabilization measure is required to protect the structure under new construction as opposed to, um, a, a maintenance activity that would not require a geotech.
Right, and so the only thought was, as I was thinking about the community club and then some further north along the bay, there's some others that are in the hundreds of feet. So any more discussion about removing the thirty-five foot and saying just fifty percent flat? Alrighty, all, all in favor?
Aye.
That was, that was good. I know this is a painful process, but I really want to get these planning commission comments in and done there. Um, the last one is maybe from recent history. Um, is maybe from recent history and learning on timing. Um. Within the discussion of when you would like to install a new enlarged harder stop shop, soft. Structural shoreline stabilization. It says you must have a geotechnical analysis that says. Uh, there was significant possibility that an existing structure will be damaged within three years of shoreline erosion. So basically you can't even start requesting a shoreline stabilization harder soft structure. Until a geotechnical engineer says you are three years or less away from having a structure threatened. The only thing I'm asking is that we say maybe five years is more reasonable, considering the permitting, the ecological, the environmental impacts. So that if you are, you need a shoreline stabilization structure. The geotechnical analysis says your structure will be threatened within five years instead of three. Uh, Marshall, did I sort of describe that right?
Yeah, that would give a, that would give an applicant a little more time to go through the process, get their permitting in order, get all the public comment that's necessary. And have the other agencies uh, having jurisdiction review the project.
Yeah, because on the current timeline, if your geotechnical engineer said you're within three years, you may get that wall up a year ahead of your. Of your property being threatened because it can easily take two years to permit and do all of this stuff. So, any other discussion about this? All in favor of including this as a comment? We'll get a vote and that's all unanimous. Well, that was easy. So I will open the floor up. To um, additional comments from the planning commission. Alright, seeing no further comments. I think Marshall, you've got them and we voted on all of them.
I do. Um, the only thing I wanted to back up on the thirty-five feet as a, or fifty percent as opposed to thirty-five feet. I do want to check with the uh, state of Washington shoreline master program to make sure that we're not uh, trying to get something in there that's in conflict with that.
Well, I mean, i- it's a planning commission comment either way. So whether or not you put it in the SMP, you're not required to put our comments in.
Aye.
See my point, Marshall?
I do.
Yeah, and, and we'd like to leave that in because we feel it shouldn't be thirty-five feet, but okay, yeah, I got it.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's sort of where we're at. Alright, so good. I have another thing to go to. So, so the last thing in your packet is something the mayor started talking to me about. Um, I don't know how many of you are familiar with Blue Zone and the Blue Zone Project. Um, I just gave one handout because, and I'll talk about why this is what I put in here. So the Blue Zone Project, and I've got the Manhattan Beach one, which is probably the best known. It's all based on a book written in like two thousand eight or six where this um, gentleman studied all of these people that have the longest living. Average highest or the longest life expectancy ever in the world. He went all around the world and looked at all of this. And he really came up with these different things that contribute to, a lot of it's esoteric, es- esoteric. Um, and there's a lot of different stuff that goes into the Blue Zones Project. As I started looking into it though, thebluzonesproject.org is actually a for-profit organization. Um, and I found two different articles where cities, one of them being Spokane. Stopped the project after the first phase because it had gone from like a hundred thousand dollars to one point two million to have this company continue to run their Blue Zone Project. Um, so I'll go back and just, I'll have them, I'll refer the mayor to some of this other issues with doing it. But in general, um, what it talks about is the stuff we've talked about, you know, it's a, it's a. It, and I'm going to go to the whole bike and walk later. It, it talks about a sense of community, um, people looking out for each other. Um, I was excited because one of the eight principles is wine at five. It recommends a glass of wine every day at five o'clock, which was cool. Yay, I'm all for that. Um, but there were other things in there. Um, and there are things we've heard. Pieces from other folks. I mean, I've heard several city councilmen saying, we just need to do more stuff for, to bring the community together as a community. Why can't we have, you know, like um, Seabook does, have a band and concert and food carts in the middle of the week in the summer? And make this a community event where the kids come and hang out. Um, so there's sort of interest around the edges of what the Blue Zones. Look for. Um, so. Part of it is also the stuff that we definitely have on our plate this year is safe walking and biking, but that's not all of it. Um, and we, we are going to get into safe walking and biking this year as the planning commission pretty soon. Um. What I would like is, and you can go to it, it's called, if you Google Blue Zone, they paid Google to give them the first thirty hits. You'll find the Blue Zone Project and you'll see all that stuff out there. I would suggest before the next meeting that everybody kind of Google Blue Zones and see what's going on. And I'm going to look at sort of the right side of the table. Cause as the left side, as I'm looking to have like two people say, I'd sort of have an interest in looking into the Blue Zones and similar. There's healthy communities, there's all that sort of stuff. And come back and sort of just report to uh, the planning commission on ideas or principles. Um, that we can do because we really need to sort of tie all this together that, sort of let's, little bits and pieces. What the Blue Zone does is basically take your existing projects and everything else and pulls it in together to comprehensive plan that they make a nice shiny brochure for. Um, so what I'd like is everybody, if they have time to go to the Google Blue Zone Project, you'll see tons of stuff out there. But then if there's a couple of people who would like to volunteer and sort of do a little bit more in-depth research and come back. And I'm thinking we just want to look at maybe five or six things the city can work at with the goal of a community. Where people live longer, healthier, happier is probably the best way to describe it. So do we sort of, anybody interested in doing that research? Other than me?
Well, I have the time to do it, so I'll, I'll volunteer.
Okay, Mark and Carrie, yeah. Yeah, and just, this just be a very informal report. Maybe if you're going to do sort of a handout, you got to look, be careful. Because a lot of it's copyrighted. Um, so if you're going to do a handout, try to get it to me by like next Monday. If you have something, and we're just looking for a couple of aspects of the sort of things we can talk about. Because as the planning commission, I think, and the mayor really wants this, is to make this a more happy, healthy community. And part of that will be safer biking, pedestrian access. Um. He has ad hoc committees and groups looking at downtown revitalization, so they can kind of work on that. Um, and the other thing that I'm going to look at and probably won't have time with everything going on in my life this week is. Also start looking at, and Mark, this will be later on for you, outreach to, um. I hate the term shot-in, but shot-ins are north shot or near shot-ins. Some of the stuff the community club was doing and continue to sort of. Make that as a city-wide sort of initiative to outreach some of our seniors with limited mobility, let's put it that way. And that all can sort of go into this vital community thing. Does that make sense to you?
Yes.
And, and as every time I talked to the mayor about this, I said, if we have somebody who feels. Uh, lonely or can't get out or can't do whatever, that's, and they're paying community club dues. They just need to be dragged to the community club because there is not a better resource in the world to make people for, feel more included in the community. I mean, have them go to line dancing. They can't even fit everybody into line dancing in there right now. So there's just so many things going on there. That we live in this community that has this incredible for, well, how you feel about being forced to play, pay community dues for us. Is whatever you want, but we have a resource that we can better use. And I know it's not a city organization. I know it's not a. Something that we can officially sort of endorse, but we sort of can work on building alliance with the community club to also provide outreach. For happier and healthier um, ocean shores. Anymore sort of, and I know I'm rambling on that, but this is something the mayor and I, in fact, the mayor and Mark and I talked about a little bit due to Mark's previous association. Um, anything else on that you think we need to say, Mark, or just sort of leave it at that and look at the next meeting?
Um, I will reach out again to uh, the leadership of the community club and plant the seed. And see, see what we can do short-term, thinking about a long-term plan.
Yeah, it is because we have this resource, but more importantly, I just want to sort of, and it's happy, healthy ocean shores isn't the answer. But something we can look at to take the principles of the Blue Zone Project and other similar um, wellness in communities. And put that together and sort of then wrap what we're going to start doing on walking and biking and all that into it, but not stop at that. Let's go to the rest of that. That makes it a healthy communities of planning commission. Um, anything else? Um, so that sort of ends, and I only put that in there as the first one. But as you're doing your research, a lot of it's copyrighted, a lot of it's for profit. And when you, when you start down the rabbit hole with bluzonproject.org, it all sounds wonderful and happy. And then when you really get. Away from the Google filters, you start seeing communities that have ceased it because of the cost. So that tells you something. So, anything else for the group? Wow, that's very good. Alrighty, so I've had a lot of confusion about it. It's my fault on who the, the note takers and secretaries are. Uh, very clearly at the next meeting correctly, it will be Paul. You're back on, alright? Um, then after that, it'll be Carrie. So we're back in that rotation. I somehow screwed it up with people missing, but I'm back now in the correct rotation. Um. Anything further before we go on? Seeing nothing, the next meeting is March twenty-eighth at two PM and I will be. I will be back for that one. I'm going to come back in, in about seven days to see my first grandchild, but I'll be back for that meeting. Um, do we have a motion to adjourn?
So will.
Second, okay, all in favor?